September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you'd like to join me in a pledge of allegiance to begin the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Brian, if we could have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Auger.
Preston.
Mr. Eppink.
Here.
Mr. Gally.
Here.
Mr. Charles.
Here.
And Mr. Zurich.
Here.
Good. There's been an agenda posted on the township's website. It's here tonight in front of us. Gentlemen, if we could review the agenda, if there's any changes or amendments. If not, we'd accept our agenda, please.
We'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
A motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah. Aye. Uh, great. We have an agenda. So tonight's agenda, we have an opportunity for public comment, then we have no unfinished business tonight. We'll move right on to the new business. What'll happen after we go through the public comment, new business, I'll call each case one at a time. I'll read the case number into the record and explain what the application is requesting. At that point, we'll ask the applicant to come up to the lectern, just walk us through what your application is, what the situation on your property is. Our role here is really to understand your application versus the township's ordinance and understand if there's a particular reason that that might warrant some type of relief from the ordinance. Uh, anybody, as Alan says, anybody who who comes in tonight who wants to speak, if you can give us your name and address when you're at the podium and also sign in so that we make sure that our minutes are accurate. With that, I'll move into public comment. If there's anybody in the room tonight or online, it does look like there's anybody online. If there's anybody in the room tonight who'd like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight, now would be an opportunity to talk to the township. Seeing no public comment, uh, we'll close that. Again, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move right into new business. First case tonight is case number twenty-four dash zero-one-five. Petitioner Elizabeth Harvey requesting a two-foot side yard variance from section five point zero-six A in order to can to reconstruct a new detached garage that is located at four-eight-eight-four Sundale Drive, which is an R-one-A single-family residential. Ms. Harvey, are you here or someone from your case? Good evening.
Yep. So I am Brian Riddle. Uh, Ms. Harvey is my wife.
Perfect.
Um, yep. So what we-
Excuse me, Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
Are you at the same address or could you give us your address, please?
Uh, forty-eight-eight-four Sundale Drive.
Thanks.
Yep. Sorry about that. Um, yep. So, uh, we have a garage currently on site. It is old, dilapidated, falling apart. Um, there's actually mold in it. It's a health hazard. And so what we are looking to do is to knock down the current garage and just put up a new one slightly extended in the current spot.
So when you say slightly extended, it's gonna be wider or longer?
Longer.
Longer.
Yep. So it'd be the same width, um, have the same front on the current property line, and then just go back farther.
Okay. And so in this zoning district, the side setback is ten foot. Uh, you're requesting that the the building or the garage be constructed eight foot from the property line. And what you're saying is that's also the current condition. So it's currently eight foot. You're not gonna make it any closer to the property line. You're just gonna essentially replicate that that wall and the garage may become longer, but that falls within our standard setbacks.
Correct.
Okay. Um, could you tell us a little bit about the construction and the aesthetics of the garage, the proposed new garage?
Yep. So, um, we would continue to have, um, the single door. So it would be a two-car garage with a single door. Um, we are looking to also, once the garage is in place, we will re-side the house to match it. So we are looking to update from white to like a nice gray color. Um.
So it it'll be, it'll it'll have a gable roof, a standard shingle roof to match the house. It sounds like the siding will match, uh, once both buildings are complete and-
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Great. Anything else we should know about the garage?
I don't believe so.
Perfect. With that, I'll bring it back to our board here. Uh, Mr. Charles, any questions or comments on?
Is the existing garage eight feet off the property line right now?
It is.
Yes, correct. That's correct. Yeah. It's a two-foot variance.
Right. I have no problems.
Ken? I I just wanna make sure. The the existing garage, uh, I assume has a slab floor inside it. Do you know, is the, is there a proper footing? So you're gonna use the same footing or? I mean, how do we know that the the new garage will be right where that one side wall is?
Uh, so we are going to tear up the entire foundation and put in a new one. Um, I would hope the construction company is able to measure that correctly.
So one thing that we do, and it wouldn't be unusual if if the board does move to grant a variance request here, is we do typically make as part of our, uh, motion, uh, the need to have the the foundation surveyed as it's installed so that it is in fact accurate between the property line. Sometimes we think we know where our property line is, maybe based on where we mow, and it's off a few inches. So we'll wanna make sure that it's specifically eight foot or beyond eight foot, but no closer than eight foot if if it was. So that's a good way to do it.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't wanna split hairs. I I think I wanna support you on your project. I think it's a really good idea. Um, but from our point of view, I mean, how do we know it's eight foot and and then when he goes to do it and he finds out it was really seven foot and he wants to leave it the same spot? I mean, we, I don't wanna handcuff him, right? I wanna say, okay, whatever it is currently, he can go up to that line. Do we, do we insu- do we know it's eight foot?
Do we have a survey?
And it could be seven foot, right? Or or?
No, we don't have a an official survey.
I think procedurally, the way what's been requested and what's been advertised and what we're discussing is an eight-foot, a two, a two-foot variance, an eight-foot distance. If the applicant started building it and had that surveyed and and discovered that it's-
Seven foot.
Seven foot, they'd have to come back to the zoning board or to move, um, or to move the garage to be in compliance with whatever's granted.
So there is a fence in place, so the measurement was off of that fence.
Assuming that the fence is on the property line.
Yes.
Okay. But it's a good point, uh, Mr. Zurich brings up is is that our board really does deal with inches. And, um, what's being requested here is what we think is one in the same, the existing location and eight foot from the property line, but there will be the obligation, uh, that it is eight foot from the property line. Uh, and if not, you'd have to come back. We really don't have the ability without advertising, um, to say, hey, you could go up to seven foot if that's about where it is. Now it's it's a dimensional variance that's being requested.
Is there another way of wording this where where we don't have, he doesn't have to come back to us if there's a half a foot difference? I mean-
No, not really.
Doesn't it sound a little?
I mean, if it's, if it's close to the property line, he'd have to come back. If it's happens to be further away, then he's fine, you know? So if it happens to be eight and a half feet away from the property line, then he's fine. Right. That's okay.
So what are the odds are the fence is wrong?
Zero.
Zero?
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty?
For sure.
Well, again, it 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 goes to the point of of we we do, uh, if not before the application, before the construction requested it's surveyed. So I think the applicant will have an opportunity to validate his property line and the location, and if he's not happy with that, um, you know, I I think the billing department will allow him to work, you know, get back on an agenda, and we could discuss that if it comes to, comes to pass.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to save him from coming back with another charge. So my thought is then we say something like, he get, you you get a survey now, and whatever that dimension is, you have to stay within. And then he doesn't, never has to come back? Or is that not technical enough because, no?
We can't.
Okay. I guess I'm-
I I I understand the spirit, and I I think it's, I think we're all there, but from a, from a, uh, public notice point of view-
Right.
It's being requested a foot or a two-foot variance, and I think we have to to deal with that dimension.
Okay. I'm all set with questions. Alan, any questions or?
Do we have any comments from any neighbors?
Uh, I did speak to one neighbor on the street. They had no issue with it once I explained what they were doing, so.
Does this fall into where he has to put forty-two inch footings or do any fireproofing? Is it that close to the house that it'll have to be?
Standard forty-two inch trench footings. If they're starting a new structure, it would be required. Forty-two inch trench footings, typical.
You realize that?
Yes.
Okay. I really have no problem with it. Um, I think, uh, Ken's in the right direction, but I think once, uh, the stakes are put in and it's trenched, to have the surveyor come out and at that point, uh, when the string line is up for the trench footings to, uh, have them verified-
Yeah.
So that you don't get poor in the footings and everything and find out they're in the wrong place and then have to stop everything.
They could also, before they even do that, you have to come back twice, but you could always pin that side of the property line and-
Exactly.
Measure it from there.
My fence on my property, I've got a board fence, and it's a foot on my property. So I could legally maintain it. Um, so fences aren't always-
Right.
Who put it up and who surveyed it when it was put up? It's hard to tell. But there's two houses just to the south of him that I think the township should go work with those, uh, citizens. Uh, he's making an improvement. There's a tree laying on top of the house and-
We're, we're taking those people-
Working on it.
Okay. All right. I have no, I have no problem as long as he's meeting everything.
Thanks, Alan. Brian, any thoughts or questions?
Uh, I don't think I have any questions over what's already been asked. I just a comment that it's, um, you know, the hardship would obviously be it's a non-conforming lot in an existing condition, and it's, it's an area that we've seen and approved many other similar variances in. And, you know, from the looks of the overhead, at least four or five of the direct neighbors are well within ten feet of the property line.
I might also comment, I was out there today in the house directly across the street. It's a brick house, and it appears that it's five foot off the fence in that location. So I, yeah. He's not asking for anything that's out of the norm in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Exactly.
At this point, I'll ask, is anybody in the audience, uh, like to comment on this case? Sir, come on up. If you could come up and just, just so we pick you up on the the TV, give us your name and address, please. Say that again once you get up to the mic.
And your address.
Rob from Gally Construction Company.
And your address.
Uh, three-seven-four-one, uh, at Sherwood Road, Ortonville, Michigan.
Thank you.
Um, we're building a, we're taking down a structure that's rotted, falling apart, has a, it has a ten-inch, uh, rat wall on it, on a slab. The whole foundation is sinking in the center. It's cracking, you know, out from the center.
Yeah.
The building was made out of wood. It's rotting. It's going, it's like going into the ground like the, like the Titanic.
Yeah.
So they wanna replace that. And what we're gonna replace it with, because of the cost of concrete and trench footing, we're gonna use a post foundation, which is shown in these, uh, plans behind you, if you go back a page. In the post, um.
They don't show up that well on our prints.
It doesn't show very well at all. But anyways, it's a, it's a post foundation, like a pole barn.
Mm-hmm.
Not a trench footing.
I appreciate that clarification. Is there an issue with that from a-
Forty-two inches.
Building?
This is designed according to the standards that he's describing. That would be acceptable with a little pole trench.
Meets the township ordinance, is it?
Yeah, we've built a dozen of barns, dozens of barns here in the, in in the township.
I would recommend that-
All the same, built the same way.
Since you're demolishing the existing structure, you have a separate permit for your demolition. That way, your demolition would require not only removal of the structure, but all the existing footings.
Right. It's, uh, we already, we dug it up. It's got a ten-inch, uh, ten-inch rat wall under its slab.
It's all gotta come off.
That's why the whole thing's falling apart. It's got substandard material, a substandard foundation. It's rotting, and it's a blight to the neighborhood. It's a hazard to them.
No, that's not true.
You know, they're just looking to put it back where it was and, you know, pick it up to the nine hundred square feet they're allowed by a- adding to the back of it.
Sure. Okay. Well, appreciate that-
At least they got something out of it with some square footage, right?
Absolutely. So we appreciate that clarification, 'cause that was part of the record in terms of the 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 port footing versus, uh, the pole construction. But as long as it, you work with the building department and get the proper permits and inspections, that works. Um, and obviously, from a contracting point of view, I think you've heard the conversation of the distance from, uh, the property line. We'll just have to validate that before.
Right. Well, well, what I went by is if you look on there, there's two surveys. There's one from the county, and there's one that they had on record with their mortgage. The one with the mortgage is on the left. The one on the right is is from the county's website. Right? So I counted the size of the building on the left as surveyed. And the position from the lot line shows exactly what they're showing. Eight feet from the lot line, six feet between the buildings. So if you add all the numbers together, it adds up to exactly right where it is.
Right. And we have every reason to believe it's accurate.
So I don't see there's any reason to do another survey.
Well, it is part of the, our policy in the township to validate that it's-
Like fifteen hundred dollars cost for a, for a land survey for a couple inches to replace an existing building we know it's already there?
No, it is, it is part of the policy, and so, so because we're talking about inches, if it's closer to the property line than than it's been-
Well, I guarantee it won't be closer to the bu- property line.
Okay. Well, we-
I guarantee you that.
We ask and and we'll have to work together with our building department, but that is one of the, will be one of the requirements that it is verified.
That we do a legal survey on, uh, for the, for the two feet.
Doesn't have to be of the whole property. Just has to be able to locate that building against the, that property line.
There, um, I don't think that that's unnecessary cost to the homeowner.
I understand.
You know? They're, they're trying to fix up their property in in a neighborhood, you know?
Well, the easiest-
That deserves it, you know?
We don't disagree.
We're supposed to help them.
And and-
So far, we've got three hundred dollars to come here. Now we're gonna do fifteen hundred dollars on that. We didn't dig a hole yet.
Sir, the easiest-
That's not right.
The easiest way to avoid all that is to move it two feet and put it, you know, per the ordinance. We're, we're here trying to help.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's six feet to the house.
Sir, my, my point is that we're trying to help. All right? So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the contractor? All right. Any other comments, uh, from the audience? I don't see anybody online. I will bring it back here for additional questions or comments or motion.
I'd just comment. I think Jim can back me up on it. The mortgage survey is not an accurate survey. It's just showing that the place is sitting on the lot.
Correct.
It's not a survey, survey.
Correct.
Even though a survey company used to do it. They don't even do it anymore.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Generally speaking, they're called mortgage report, not even survey.
Okay. Great. With that, gentlemen, if we have more questions or Mr. Gally's writing some notes here?
Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion and, uh, case number twenty-four dash zero-one-five, petitioner Elizabeth Harvey requesting a two-foot side yard variance from section five point oh-six A for table five point oh-six dash two in order to reconstruct a new detached garage. I recommend that we approve the variance as requested, citing that it is the same condition, already an existing condition, just building it in the same location. Requiring placement verification of the new building to meet the variance request, citing it is an area of non-conforming lots and an area of similar variances have been granted in the township in the past in this area.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
All support.
We have a motion to, uh, grant the variance as av- as advertised. Brian, if we could have a roll call, please?
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppink?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Zurich.
Yes.
Great. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right. Great. Moving on, we are moving to case number twenty-four dash zero-one-six, Christopher Freeman requesting a variance from section five point zero-six uh, in order to construct a barn larger than what was previously approved, uh, here at the Zoning Board of Appeals at seven-six-eight-five Bitter Bush, which is an R-one-R rural residential. Good evening, Mr. Freeman. How are you? Could you give us your name and address?
Chris Freeman, seven-six-eight-five Bitter Bush, Clarkston, Michigan.
Good to see you back.
Thank you.
Guys, excuse me. Is it, is it possible, just if you're gonna go through those details, if you could just step out, please? Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, so inadvertently, when I submitted that, uh, prior, the variance prior, I didn't include the the, uh, porch overhang that, uh, will be on the north and east side of the property. It won't affect what the variance, uh, we had asked for a variance to move closer to the road. Um, adding the, uh, the porch, uh, overhang doesn't impact the the site plan. Um, so it's really just, uh, getting approval for, um, architectural statement. And, uh, it'll be a finished overhang metal. Uh, and as you can see, this time I came a little better prepared with drawings. And so architecturally speaking, uh, it's better. And then, as you can see, it doesn't impact where we asked for the variance from the offset from the, or where it is, uh, where it's located, pertinent in the house and the street.
So the previous variance that was granted was really to allow, um, the building to be built in the front lawn, the front yard, in front of the front of the house. You've got a, a larger piece of property. The house is set back further than the front setback line would would anticipate.
And so technically, the the barn is kind of off to the side, proposed to be off to the side. At that point, um, you had included drawings and dimensions of the building. You're saying that this is in the same location. Same location.
We're not, uh, changing the variance that was here, but simply this building is is larger, uh, potentially more decorative than it was before. And so you're coming back here from a, uh, variance point of view to make sure that what's being built is still consistent with what was previously considered.
Correct. And again, I think the most important thing is, is on the, the, the ten-foot overhang is on the back and the east side of, and it doesn't impact where the building's at, so, or the setback, so.
It's not closer to the road.
Yeah, correct.
The street view from here, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, it, it's up there. Never mind.
Oh, the street. I'm sorry.
Brian, could, would you mind throwing up the street view, please? Or the, the overhang? Great. Thank you. Um. Mr. Gally, any questions?
I don't think I have any questions at this time.
Mr. Auger?
Uh, no, I. It would be nice if the overhang was towards the front, which would make a nicer structure out of it for the street view, but I think the elevation, the south elevation, uh, will give enough detail to make it look, uh. And I read over the minutes, we didn't ask for any additional screening by, uh, pine trees or anything towards the road, did we, in this case?
I don't believe so. No.
I do plan to put up some, uh, once we get settled in there, I'm gonna start working that property a little bit more. Uh, and there'll be some more, I I hope to put in some pine trees for some more privacy.
I can, I can see that would be an advantage to-
Yeah. To some degree. I mean, but other than, it's a nice-looking building, but you wanna kinda hide it off there.
I, I, I think it's an improvement to it, so I don't have a problem with it. He has plenty of property to, uh, build a much larger building, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess Alan's question struck one in my head with the elevations. I mean, the elevation shows stone on the bottom. You plan on doing that?
Absolutely.
The, the overhangs, detail in the, the Queen Anne's corners on the overhangs, it's pretty much gonna be as drawn?
Yeah, at a hundred percent. Better be paying for it.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Just wanted to make sure in part of the record that, I mean, it's beautiful the way it's drawn, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Zurich.
I don't think I have any questions. You're, you're, uh, because of this added overhang, we have to approve it again?
Yeah, because that technically on accessory structure, that adds square footage. So the existing enclosed structure is meets the, what was approved, twenty-eight by thirty-six, I believe. And the overhang counts as additional square footage. He's on a very large lot, so easily meets that requirement. Um, and overhangs, open overhangs like that are considered half of one foot in the calculation. So it's, you know, if it's five hundred square feet, it really only counts as two fifty. But this is, uh, unfortunately, that's why we have to come back.
It's larger.
Cause he's putting, you know, he's got posts with footings, so.
Okay. Similar, similar discussion as we had with the previous in terms of of consistency. Mr. Charles?
Uh, no, as long as it meets the minimum standards. I'm looking here. It says forty-six hundred and thirty-two feet square foot allowed, and it says only nineteen seventy-four. No, it's fine.
Brian, did we have any, uh, comments from neighbors or online? Is there anybody in the room that would like to, uh, speak on this case? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I would just like to make sure, uh, the motion includes the minutes and the discussion, uh, tonight, um, from last year's, uh, ZBA case 'cause it had a lot of details in it that pertains to this structure as he's requesting with the changes on it.
So in other words, any conditions that were part of the last motion should continue to be part of this motion?
to be part of this motion?
Exactly.
Sounds like you're ready to make a motion.
I think Brian's writing details out there. He's doing a great job.
I'll make a motion, case twenty-four dash zero one six. Petitioner is Christopher Freeman, requesting variance from section five point oh six A four in order to construct a barn larger than what was previously approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals at seven six eight five Bitter Bush. I recommend that we approve the case as requested, citing the minutes from the last meeting to follow any detail or instructions of the last meeting where it was initially approved. Also, placement verification required of the structure to make sure it's in the proper place that we approved. Also citing that the case was just merely an amendment because the petitioner added square footage to an already approved structure. And also the representation of the petitioner that the barn will match the, as close as possible the plan submitted.
Support. Hey, for point of clarification, the last meeting that we referenced in there was from September sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll accept the amendment.
I'll accept that.
We have an amendment to approve as advertised and inconsistent with the previous approval in September of twenty twenty-three. Brian, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Eppink?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Zerik?
Yes.
Thanks, Alan. Thank you, guys.
It's like two nice additions to the township property, so thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll get it, I'll get it right then. So.
Okay. All right. With that, that concludes our new business this evening. If we could move, we've got posted on our packets was the meeting, the meeting minutes from August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Had a chance to review those. If we could have a motion to either clarify or accept. Thank you.
Unless I hear some changes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of August seventh, twenty twenty-four as submitted.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes have been approved. We're still an open meeting. We have a discussion. Anything to discuss?
No.
I just wish we could have figured out a simpler, lower-cost solution for the first guest.
I think your point from my perspective was right on and made a ton of sense, but number one, I think from a legal point of view, we have to be consistent with what's advertised. I also knew that the case, the second case, was a clarification that, you know, kind of made sense. Hey, the intent was there. We actually are improving the structure, but nonetheless, the procedure required to be brought back.
The details in the second case were a lot clearer on the structure by a cemental this time than what it was last-
Sure. Oh, yeah. That was a clean-
So he's taken time to look into it and figure out what he really wanted to do.
Right.
I agree with the fence thing. Chances are, it is an inch or two off.
Or more.
We all know fences.
Yeah.
And you can't just simply pull a tape off the fence, you know? And I appreciate their concern about spending the extra money, but you have to.
Well, and I think we, as a board, have done a good job in the last many years of being more and more consistent with that verification, which is really the only way for Dave and Brian and their teams to do their jobs, is to give something to measure from. And so it's, it is tough because we're getting towards the end of the season. I'm sure they want to get them going this year and everything else, but-
And if you look at the aerial, the house about two or three to the north by that aerial, looks like it's sitting right on the property line.
Right. Well, the reality is, is probably if they would have come in here and said, hey, we want a six-foot variance because we think we're six foot, we would have discussed that and considered that. So it's, it's-
We've had other cases in the neighborhood where they went ahead and built, and then they've came before us where the assessor, whoever's complained, had to remove structures, so.
Well, and I can always, you could always advertise it to be on air on the side of caution, but, I mean, when they give you a number, we're going to go by the number.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, it's water under the bridge now, I think, given-
Because the open county, that's not a survey, what you're showing from open county gate, property gateway, that's, those lines are accurate according to the plaque. The problem is, is with the aerial photography is because of the curvature of the earth, it's skewed. So it is within a foot or two, if you scale it properly, it's within a foot or two, you know, of variation. So you did the right thing.
If no other discussion, we give a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at six thirty.
Second, all support?
Aye.